Okay, Jacob will call vote please.
Butler?
Here.
Jordan?
Here.
Lipscomb?
Here.
Obrich?
Here.
Smith?
Here.
Frash?
Here.
Vincenta?
Here.
All members of the present.
Okay, first item on the agenda is the minutes from the July 17 regular meeting. Does everyone receive a copy of those minutes? Does anyone have any questions or comments about those minutes? Okay, hearing none, I'll entertain a motion to approve those minutes. Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Frash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
Okay, the minutes for the July 17 meeting have been approved. The next one is the minutes from the August 2 special meeting. Does everyone receive a copy of those? And does anyone have any question about those? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion to approve those. Okay, we're good. Take a roll call vote to approve the August 2 special meeting minutes.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Frash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
All members here in favor.
Okay, minutes for the August 2 special meeting also been approved. Okay, under new business, we have a reappointment to the Board of Architecture Review.
Yeah, I can do that. We actually have two reappointments and I emailed council and mayor everyone ahead of time. The first member is Brad Breisch. He served in the board for three years. I have contacted him already. He is interested in serving again. He is a degree in architecture and is one of the owners of Breisch and Crowe. It's a design build company right here in downtown and he owns it's two structures within the district. And the second member is Peggy Rikadonna. She owns Nissati Pooch and is a resident. I contacted her. She's also willing to serve another term. These are mayoral appointments. That could open up to any questions that anyone might have. If not, then the mayor could ask for the reappointment of both members and council can go down.
I would like to ask for the reappointment of both members again. We have an architect who will be back on the board and Peggy Rikadonna, who's been a very involved citizen and is certainly looking to keep our city as beautiful as it is. So I would like to make the appointment of both Mr. Breisch and Ms. Rikadonna. Do you want them made separately so they can vote?
I don't know Elizabeth if it matters, maybe so.
I would do separate ones.
Separate. Okay, first I'd like to appoint Mr. Brad Buck Breisch to Board of Architecture Review.
Is there a motion?
Motion. Second? Vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Frash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
All members here in favor.
The second member I'd like to appoint is Ms. Peggy Rikadonna.
I'd like to accept the nomination of Ms. Rikadonna.
Second?
Second. Take a roll call vote.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Frash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Both members of the present are aboard. Okay, next item is correspondence. Mr. Vincent Lu has a correspondence from the president's block party.
Yes, I was approached by one of the citizens. They live on Criswell Drive. They are requesting or asking for permission to have their annual block party on Criswell Road and that'll be from the address of 131 Criswell to 148 Criswell. And I'm not quite sure the start time they want to do that on, but they are asking for permission and I wanted to bring it up to council.
When is it done?
September 2nd.
Labor Day weekend, right?
Yes.
Okay.
Does anybody have any comments on that? Okay, we'll entertain a motion to approve the block party. Lipscomb? Vincenta? Take a roll call vote please.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Frash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
All members here in favor.
Okay, the approval done, you can take that back to them.
Okay. And do they, they'll get in touch with Jeremy? Okay.
Right, also I'm giving in touch with the police department to make sure that there's not a traffic issue or something so that they're aware of what's going on and also the fire department.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Okay, we'll move on now to the reports. First report is Mayor Dolan.
Thank you. We've come together on this very important historical day. We're looking toward fall, back to school. And in fact, the meet the team event will be at the stadium on August 16th. It's a Wednesday. We hope to see many of our citizens there to help welcome the teams and the kids back to school. I attended a meeting with Jeremy, Jeff Vaughn, and Mike Reed. It was concerning infrastructure and some of the water projects in general. Had the privilege of welcoming participants and attendees to the ARC event on Saturday, the amphitheater. It was put on by Kara Erwin of ARC. And again, thanks to Peggy Rikadonna, John Raditzak for emceeing. And special thanks to the St. Clairsville cheerleaders for the wonderful birthday salutations. It makes turning 39 worth it. I'm also happy to report I donated a lot of dollars to the dunk tank, but I did knock Greg Clark into the water twice. I can't lift my arm now, but I did. He truly took two for the team and they raised a lot of money. Good job. Hosted a meeting with several mayors in the area to discuss some of the ARC funding and how it can be utilized in our area and as a group of mayors. We also participated in Cool Fest, the Earth, Wind &amp; Fire Tribute Band. That was an awesome day. Thank you Eric Gay for putting that together with Tokyo Rose. And I was in a couple other meetings with Jeremy and that's pretty much it. Thank you, Jeremy.
Okay, anybody have any questions or comments for the mayor?
If I understand correctly, today is your birthday?
Yes, that would be the important historical day. At least in my life. Thank you. There's nowhere I'd rather spend it.
Okay, questions or comments? We'll move on to service director.
Good evening, council. We've got one emergency legislation item. Everyone knows that the Board of Election kind of changed some verbiage on us for the police levy, so there's one item there. And then I do believe, is there, we scheduled the special meeting for tomorrow at noon or tomorrow at noon? So we'll have the second piece tomorrow at noon. Since the last meeting, I've had 18 different various meetings from law firms to ARCAP to high EPA to rec board, just about everything and everybody you can imagine. Completed projects, we're still working on water nodes and water meters. Had an EPA meeting about the Dorothy tank. Negotiated an easement and temporary construction easements for the property along the west end Route 40 water line. The I-70 water line project is progressing. All the pipe has been installed. They're going to fill the water or fill the pipes with water tomorrow and disinfect it and test it. So about another week and we can get rid of those nasty traffic lights on the interstate on the bridge. Fixed a sinkhole on Melrose. Been working on the culverts on that. The EPA has finally submitted their, the federal EPA I should say, submitted their inspection report. I'm in the process of reviewing it and going through it. There were a couple errors I'm going to get sent back to them. The water distribution project, we had our construction meeting number four. They're still working in Spring Park. They're actually hooking up residents to the new water lines up there. They started on Route 40 East on the north side, going to work their way down towards town and then turn around and go right back. Finished up on Young Lane, the work down there. Investigating a couple other water line areas that we have in our mapping that weren't accurate. Sections on Walnot, some other things. We're going to see about adding some of that into work scope. Still working with the contractor on notifications and going through stuff. Easements for the water line distribution, Phase 1 and 2A are still ongoing. Bearings for the third screw pump sewer plant have been finalized and hopefully, I think, did we install those yet? You installed the other ones with that one, so we haven't installed them yet. Getting there. Painting, still looking at mapping out the water line breaks from the last 10 years and working with the street department and seeing what we're going to need to do with some of this water distribution project. We're still working on the sinkhole at Central Park. The bypass road, working on that. We've got a sinkhole on Shepherd Terrace, still one on Thompson, there's one on Jeanette, and there's one on Jefferson. So it's the summer of sinkholes apparently around here. We do have some cul replacements that were happening on Spring Park and Elm. Those are completed. Water distribution, we talked about that, going through. Still working on a couple of the building projects. Working on the county water agreement. Trying to get a date determined when we can start mixing water, blending their water with ours so that we can get 100% by their, by the EPA's deadline at the end of October. Still updating administrative policies and procedures. Ask me contract negotiations. We're down to a couple items, so I've got a meeting this week with them. Hopefully that'll wrap that up and get it taken care of. Pretty good negotiations. There was some give and take on both sides, so I'm fairly happy with it. Water tanks, I mentioned this in the utility committee. We're going to be cleaning both our water tanks the week of the 21st. So there will probably be some notifications going out and going through everything in there. Department wise, electric department, still basically the same thing. It's just maintenance and service work disconnects. Working on the lines out for the get-go. Tree trimming whenever we can, water, wastewater. We had another break today. I believe that puts us at 21 for the year. Fixing hydrants and curb boxes and valves when we can, locating things, updating policies and procedures. Smoke testing, still need to get those letters out. That's going to remind me every week and it's still on the list. I just got to get more time in the day. Sewer station, lift repairs. We've got some pumps that we're going to look at and some different ideas of how we're going to repair some of those. Water nodes, they're constant. What do we, like about five a month roughly?
About six or seven a month.
So they're just, they're just falling like dominos. We're getting them in when we can and going through it. Street department, they've been obviously patching potholes, but mostly been fixing sinkholes and mowing. Rec center, still got some concert series going on. Police department, Frash for Matt, he's out, he's got a kidney stone and he's been fighting for over a week now, so he's on the mend. That's why we have our lieutenant here tonight. And that about wraps everything else up.
Okay, thank you, Jeremy. Does anybody have any questions for the service director?
One's about the resolution, so I don't know if you want to talk about that during the resolution time. The question is, is this the resolution that is going to be addressed at the special meeting?
No, this is the first one. The changes that the Secretary of State's office informed the election board of affected both pieces of legislation.
Okay, so we have to do this on emergency?
Yeah, we do this one in emergency. We get our certificate tomorrow and then we will do the second piece of legislation.
So the question about the second one, is the meeting on Tuesday or Wednesday? This paper says Wednesday, but our email said Tuesday.
Tuesday.
So will we have a certificate tomorrow in order to do this?
Yes, we will have the certificate tomorrow.
Jacob will give us the certificate.
Yes, the auditor's office is aware of the urgency of this. We're not the only political subdivision in this vote.
Okay, so this happens tonight in, if this happens tonight in emergency?
Right.
Tomorrow then we?
Tomorrow at noon.
Tomorrow at noon is a special council meeting. Okay. My second question is, you talked about title searches. Have the title searches been done for the houses on F Street?
Yes, yes. That is hopefully going to close by the end of this week.
For the end of this week.
Okay, those are my questions.
I have a question on that. What is that for?
What's the title search?
The houses for?
Sinkhole. Are you sinkhole on F Street? Or not on F Street, but at Central Park. It's about 25 feet deep, 80 feet in diameter, getting buried.
And the city bought the houses, correct or not?
Not yet, no, but we're going to.
We will be by the end of the week, yes.
To have access to fix the sinkhole.
You don't have to get council approval for that or anything?
It was discussed in the building grounds.
It was discussed in the building grounds, the amount is less than what's needed for council approval.
So those will just be torn down?
Probably.
Nothing else?
Any other questions for the service director?
Jeremy, did they start like on the fuel tank at the city garage?
Fuel tank is what, two days from the end, totally complete?
By the end of the week, everything should be there. The inspector's supposed to be gone and we can go ahead and fuel the tanks as soon as he checks the pressure gates tomorrow.
Who was the contractor on that?
Fuel tech.
Fuel tech?
Are they the only ones to do it?
Locally, yes, that's who we used, but we did look at cooperative purchasing, trying to get numbers for that too.
The price tag on that?
460.
Sorry?
460 I think is what.
What about 340?
340.
Yeah, I thought it was 360 was by.
Yeah, maybe 360, somewhere in that neighborhood.
Did we get bids on that?
We used cooperative purchasing and then went through and then ended up with them.
What do you mean cooperative? Do you mean state purchasing? AC in the heater, direct center, any?
Been ordered 12 weeks' lead time. If that, it'll probably be longer. It'd be here just in time for winter.
Cheers to that word. Any other questions for the, but?
Yeah, and then Spring Park, you say the residential taps that are going on now?
They're starting to tap on now, yeah.
How long will that take to get all the homes?
I don't know. Depends on what they run into. They ran into last week, they were trying to tap one and they were boring for, well, not boring, but coming across and they hit the old water line and ruptured the old water line, so.
Now after those taps are all made, is there like plans for the road repairs or what's the plan?
Yeah, basically in the contract, the contractor in that area is going to patch the road, come through. We are going to take our camera and camera sewer lines and all the culverts to make sure. We replaced one of the culverts up there now. We're going to do it afterwards, but it was kind of in the way of the water line, so we kind of screwed it on both together to get it done. Once we have all that done, then the plan is to come in and pave these streets and go through it and then hopefully, you know, hands off for, you know, another four or five years and then it's only general maintenance. It's crack fill, it's, you know, sealing it after about 10 years and, you know, knock on wood, we don't have any problems and we don't have to touch the streets for a long time.
Would this be more of a tougher job because, you know, the roads are really tore up? Is there a different base or is it just?
There's no base, there's no base under some of these streets.
So this would be just kind of?
So right now what they're going to do is come in and they'll patch what's there, what's been torn up and then we're going to have to make the decision on whether or not we come in and put a base in and see how well this holds up with the batches. So it's a possibility that it could just be just like Edinburgh, I mean where we have a total full depth replacement.
Probably a good possibility, huh?
Yeah, that's going to be a good possibility on a lot of our streets. There's no base under, I'd say, what, 80, 90%? I mean, it's just, from digging in the water lines and finding stuff, there's nothing.
And then, again, this might be a question for the, for the streets north and south, but on that, have we had any plans or anything like with the garbage trucks? Have we gone any further?
No, we haven't gone any further with that. The only thing that I've come up with is unless council would like to bite the bullet and try to make one garbage hauler, which everyone I've ever seen do that, it is a cluster and no one is ever happy because some people are getting rid of their hauler and the back and forth. One of the things I've talked to the street department and Donnie about is our cul-de-sacs. They take the brunt of everything that's there, so when we redo a cul-de-sac now, we're redoing it in concrete. Heavy duty concrete coming through instead of asphalt. Bless you. Asphalt, no matter what you do, as hot as it is, if you keep running and running a truck or something on the same radius, it just keeps pushing the material over and makes that nice little divot around. Concrete won't do that. That's why if you look at gas stations in these areas where most of, you have concentration of cars and vehicles that are always turning or doing something, it's always concrete and then the roadway is asphalt going through, so.
And then what, a few, year and a half ago, we had the meeting where all the companies kind of discussed on smaller trucks?
Yeah.
Is that still something we can pursue?
It would be nice. We've kind of been waiting to see how this packing plant or the, you know, comes up with the transfer station, just to see if they're going to allow others to play in their area or if they're not, but it's one of those.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions for the service director?
Okay, thank you, Jeremy.
You're welcome. Okay, move on to police shape. Matt Thornton here, TJ, you have a report?
Luke, July report, calls and complaints 453. SWAT callouts one, accidents seven. Officer callback requests are 82, arrests are 21. Wards served are four, domestics five, traffic stops 117. And if anybody wants to break down on any of that, I'd be glad to tell you. That's basically the report of July.
Can I just say, Saturday, I went down through Main Street going someplace. You had three police cars, the lights all going, I saw TJ Way and going through a purse and?
Substantial drug bust.
Huge drug bust. So I'm very appreciative.
That's all. Anybody have any questions for, for you, Jim? Okay, we move on to finance director, Annette.
Well, we, well.
Try that again.
Hello, everyone. From us, Melvin. Nothing really new other than I came back to work today. I was off last week. And then there's still work on the audit. I haven't heard from the auditor since I've been back and they haven't, didn't send Dan anything during that time period either, so that's all I have. And then we have every year, a separate part of the audit, they do the annual financial statement. So it is complete and it's in draft form at the auditor's office now, the state auditor, and then when it's approved, it'll be public, so I'll give you a copy of that one if it comes through for 2022. That's all I have.
Thank you, Annette. Anyone have any questions for the finance director? Okay, thank you, Annette. Move on to planning and zoning, Mr. Murphy.
Thanks, Jim, council. Just one item, and I spoke with Jim last week about this and how we might proceed. The city was approached by the owners of the newest town diner, which are here, Tara and TJ, about the idea of, what's, the acronym is DORA, D-O-R-A, and that's a designated outdoor refreshment area. I think it's definitely something that council should look at and I could assist in being the lead on that. Basically, and I'll do my best to explain it because I don't have a lot of information yet, just starting to look into it, but the legislative authority for the city, which in this case would be the council, looks at setting up a specific area. Usually it's in a downtown area. That designated refreshment or outdoor refreshment area would allow businesses that do have, say for example, a restaurant or the ability to sell alcoholic beverages, rather than have just a designated spot in front of that business, which then can take up some of the sidewalk if they want to have sidewalk dining. It looks at the, maybe, and again, there's no, that's the thing looked at, designates a portion of that downtown to your main street to allow for someone to purchase alcohol or purchase it at the restaurant or whatever, they could sit outdoors and could stroll through the street. So there's a lot more to it than that. But since the legislative authority, which is council, would be the ones that come up with the guidelines and ultimately have to vote on them, I thought it was a good idea to set up a committee, whether it's an existing committee or just members, maybe a few members that volunteer and you could sit down and start looking at what the requirements might be. So then a kind of a summary of the requirements could then be sent to the council members and the council members as a whole could decide, okay, do we want to move forward and looking at this more detail? Are we opposed to it or are we in favor of it? So everything's very preliminary now, just looking for is either an existing committee or get a new committee set up and look into that. With me and I would kind of research it, but also I don't want to do it in a microcosm. You know, council members since you're ultimately voting on it, have some familiarity with that.
I think that's a good idea. I could be on the committee, I'd volunteer. It makes sense to me that it's a specific issue, so I would just propose like a specific committee for this particular issue. Needs discuss this, then when it's done, then that committee doesn't exist. I guess makes sense to me.
I would also like to be on that committee since I am on the zoning committee. It might make sense for me to sit also.
And I don't know, Elizabeth, if we need to have a certain number on a committee or if that really matters.
Typically, we have no more than three.
So if we had two, that's not a problem either.
No, but if you want a third for balance, you've done that before. In case there are two committee members that don't agree, there is a third that, yeah.
JC, you can be on?
JC?
Yep.
And since it is three members, obviously they would have to have notes in the newspaper.
Correct.
Members of the public, at this point in time, it's just really researching and discussion and, you know, it's not going to be a quick thing unfortunately, but at least it gets us started. So I'll, maybe possibility in next week sometime, I'll contact the members and email you. Is it best to email the three that volunteered?
It's best to text me. I like texts.
Okay, all right, you can do that. And then when we might set up a meeting and then we need to get Jacob involved, at least as far, do you handle the setup of those to the newspaper or someone?
Yeah, I can do that. And this is because it's an official council committee? Because we won't have a quorum there, there will only be three, because it's an official committee.
Right, so maybe even afterwards, we stick around real quick, get the first meeting books.
You can ask any, you can ask any questions now, obviously, but do you want to ask more questions?
Yeah, does anybody have any questions they want to propose right now and before that Tom could maybe answer?
No, I think just getting us some information. I mean, I think there's, I've looked a little bit up on the website, but any information that you can have for that first meeting so that we can come through.
I actually vacationed somewhere and they had that in the town that we were in. They had that in their downtown district, so, and it's Portland.
Okay, all right. And the state does have, let's say, a section of their website, the Department of Commerce that handles this, and they actually, there is a map and I was amazed at the number of communities that already have, I wouldn't say 100, but I'm not surprised if it would be close to that. The whole idea, I think, is to kind of add some light to downtown, at the same time have regulations so that people aren't abusing the community.
Okay, we basically have three volunteers at this point. Okay, we basically have three volunteers at this point, Kristi, JC, and Beth, that you guys want to kind of get together after the meeting's over and maybe with Tom or any questions and kind of go from there and see how you want to approach this and get as much information as Tom can get for you, that way can be brought back to council after that.
And I think at that point in time, it wouldn't just be to, I guess, confirm that council members are, because all of them would have to vote on it.
Right.
That they are maybe willing to have some guidelines drawn up. Because if council members did decide, but we don't want to do that, then there's no use in the committee proceeding forward or council, or if it's something else.
So, it would be, would the recommendations or the guidelines would be by the committee to council or council themselves?
You'd need a full council bill.
Yeah.
Any suggestions for guidelines?
Yeah, the committee would do the research and then come to council with the votes or recommendations and council can?
Can that say if they want to proceed with it?
Or have questions and, you know.
Okay, any other questions on that? Okay, Tom, do you have anything else?
No, that's it.
Okay, thank you very much. Okay, we'll move on now to the council committees. Finance, Don?
No report, but next finance meeting will be August 21st at 6:15.
Okay, we want to utilities.
We reviewed the utility report and we approved two sewer requests, sewer credit requests, and our next meeting is September 5th at 6:15. Tuesday.
You want to discuss what we discussed in there about having council come?
Did you want me to? We, so we were talking, okay, well, we got into solar options.
Battery.
Battery, yeah, and they are coming in the next meeting then, right, where you're going to try?
Tried to have them there, but they won't be here tonight, so they'll be at the next meeting.
Okay, so for more information, he passed out some information to us, but AEP will come to the next meeting and give us more of a presentation of, I guess, what they have.
Presentation on battery storage and the ability, the potential savings it could have for the city. So, instead of having them come to utility and then come to council, if we could just get one or the other, but we'll see.
So, if people are interested in learning more, 6:15?
Yeah, 6:15. Should we move that to 6 o'clock then?
Might as well.
I think we better, yeah, go ahead and make that meeting 6 o'clock then.
Right, we'll make sure that that gets up public in plenty of time also.
The 5th, September 5th. It's a Tuesday, because?
It's a Tuesday.
Holiday's Monday.
Monday's the holiday.
So, 6 o'clock?
6 o'clock on the thing.
Okay, so anybody from council, what does the regular, not on the committee, well, want to get some information on that, if they can make it to 6 o'clock, they can hear what the presentation is and see if they have any questions that they want to raise to. Any other on utility? Okay, we'll move on to police. Mike?
A new report, as soon as Matt's available, we'll set the next police committee meeting.
Streets, outside, Mike?
Yeah, I spoke to three households on Pinecrest concerned about the road there. Are we, is there a water line going in up through the Pinecrest?
Check. I'll check, I'll let you know.
And I was, as I was leaving there, going down Green Tree, that Legion Road's pretty bad too. I don't know if we have any plans for that.
Not in this phase, but eventually, but that's something we can look at.
One guy on Pinecrest was, said he was told several times that it would be fixed over there, so.
I'll find out.
Going back to the previous demonstration.
Okay, streets, outside, JC?
No report.
Anything on safety?
No report.
Building and grounds, Beth?
So, we had a meeting on July 18th and the first thing we did was schedule annually, there's supposed to be a joint meeting between the city and Junior Sports, so we scheduled that joint meeting for August 22nd at 6 o'clock at the city building, so that'll be the next building grounds committee, but it'll be in conjunction with Junior Sports. We also talked about the need to get the titles for the properties on Neff Street to address the sinkhole, so Jared has already reported that's happened. And then we also had a conversation about the road going to Junior Sports and the potential to get that lot there to make the road so that you could actually get a bus or vehicles to get down that route more safely. And the next meeting is on August 22nd at 6 o'clock.
Did you say at 6, Beth?
6 o'clock, yes, here at the city building.
That's a, that will be combined with the Junior Sports house, questions?
Anybody have any questions for Beth? Okay, planning commission, Kristi?
No report.
Fire district, Linda?
No report. The next meeting is Wednesday, August 16th, 8:15 a.m. at the firehouse.
Anybody have any questions for Linda on fire district? Recreation, Kristi?
The Fall Festival is scheduled for Saturday, September 9th. There will be a craft and vendor show inside the rec center and I know there's events going on outside also, but they're accepting vendor spots. There's 25 available, $25 for each vendor table and you can call the rec center or go on the, on the website to sign up. All the sports signups are still open that I talked about at the last meeting and that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Kristi. Anybody have any questions for Kristi on rec?
Jim, I just wanted to mention this coming Friday night will be the last concert at the gazebo by The Hooch and I'm not sure who The Hooch is, but he plays variety and I've heard he's good, so, 7:30.
Okay, park district, anything on park?
Nothing involving the city. The next meeting is Monday, August 14th, 4:30 at the park.
Okay, if you include the council reports, takes us to ordinance and resolutions, law, direction.
Okay, before you is Resolution 2023-24 and this is the resolution requesting county auditor to certify to the city of St. Clairsville the total current tax valuation of the city of St. Clairsville and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by 95 hundreds or a 0.95 mil renewal levy and declaring an emergency. This is for the police department. There is also language in the resolution that states that the one that we passed, which was 20 20, 2023-20 is being superseded by this piece of legislation and replaced in its entirety. There was language that the Board of Elections needed our legislation to have in it. There have been changes this year and several communities were not, yeah, used their old legislation and we now have to make other changes to it, so.
Okay, can you read that Resolution 2023, please?
Resolution number 2023-24, a resolution requesting the county auditor to certify the city of St. Clairsville the total current tax valuation of the city of St. Clairsville and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by 95 hundreds, 0.95 mil renewal levy for the St. Clairsville Police Department and declaring an emergency.
Okay, there has been a request for emergency.
I have a question.
Okay.
Just in that first paragraph, help me understand these dates. It was passed by the voters in 20, in 2018?
That was one of the things we needed to add into the legislation for the new guidelines. You have to refer back to the previous legislation when it was passed by the voters and when it expires on the tax duplicate in the last collection year.
So, those are all?
Yes, that was one of the things we needed to have in there.
Okay, so we, it was 2018, so.
Okay, again, emergency's been requested. Does anyone wish to make a motion to consider this emergency?
I note that the rules requiring ordinances and resolutions to be read on three separate readings be suspended and declaring an emergency.
Do you have a second, Mr. French? Okay, we'll take a roll call vote to consider this emergency legislation.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, this will be considered emergency legislation. Jacob, would you read it, the final one?
Resolution number 2023-24, a resolution requesting the county auditor to certify the city of St. Clairsville the total current tax valuation of the city of St. Clairsville and the dollar amount of revenue that would be generated by 95 hundreds, 0.95 mil renewal levy for the St. Clairsville Police Department and declaring an emergency.
Okay, we'll need a, oh, she, JC, second? Take a vote, pass the legislation.
Butler?
Yes.
Jordan?
Yes.
Lipscomb?
Yes.
Obrich?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Thrash?
Yes.
Vincenta?
Yes.
All members are in favor.
Okay, Resolution 2023-24 has been passed.
Jim, I do want to say one thing. I want to thank your council clerk, Jacob. He was my second set of eyes on all these revisions, making sure that all the dates match, that we needed to have match. And out to the Board of Elections, they were really, really helpful in how we needed to change the legislation, answering emails way past business hours on Friday evening and even on Sunday. And to our county auditor's office, because they were also very helpful in making sure that we had what we needed to make sure this goes through this time.
Thank you, Annette. Always is better for everybody when you can work together and get things accomplished that is positive. Okay, then this next special meeting will be tomorrow at noon to pass the second part of this legislation that needs to be to get this turned into the Board of Elections, which has to be out there by 4 o'clock Wednesday, so that'll?
4 o'clock Wednesday's the deadline.
That meeting will be at 12 o'clock here tomorrow.
So, this Wednesday on this piece of paper is wrong?
Correct.
Yeah, that was a misprint there. It is tomorrow at 8 o'clock, or at noon in?
Just wanted to make sure that we're in great place, just so this thing is gone.
Okay, the next regular meeting is August 21st at the regular time, 7 o'clock here in the city building. So, that concludes, does anyone have any comments or questions that they want to bring out before we adjourn? Okay, make a motion to adjourn? Beaming's here.